All right, good.
Okay, so I'd like to welcome you all to our curriculum committee meeting this evening. Dr. Winters and his team are going to be going over the virtual plan for the district. And I spoke to Dr. Winters earlier, he went over everything with me, I was really impressed. I can tell that so much work went into this, it's very comprehensive, it addresses things that were of concern back in the in the spring, and I think you're gonna really be, you know, those of you who didn't go over it or read it yet are gonna be really impressed, they did an awesome job, and thank you for all that hard work. Okay, Dr. Winters?
Thank you, Dr. McLennan, at this time, I'm gonna turn things over to Dr. Minor, our superintendent, who's gonna give some background, and then we'll get into the nuts and bolts of the plan.
Okay, one thing, then, I know, after you're done with the presentation, we will have time for the questions from the community and parents.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Winters and Dr. McLennan.
Dr. Minor, your voice sounds, Dr. Minor? You're, oh, Dr. Minor, can you hear me?
No, she can't.
Okay.
I am gonna try to stop her video.
I'll go ahead and jump in at this point in time.
Yeah.
Everybody, I think, has been having technical difficulties today in light of the storm and the rain and everything else going on. Just to get us started and provide a little bit of background, ever since Dr. Minor started in July, we've been taking a good-
Dr. McLennan. I can hear everything.
That was a little bit better. Say something else.
Did we lose her?
Yeah, I don't see her.
When we started down this road in July, when Dr. McLennan, when Dr. Minor started as the new superintendent, we were really taking a look at making sure we were as best prepared as we could be to educate our students in the best way that we knew how. And at that point in time, looking at the data, looking at the fact that the area in Pennsylvania where we live was in the green, we were completely slated and ready to move forward with in-person instruction, with a virtual option for families that wanted it. And so we went through the planning process, looked at the, you know, health and safety plan, got that together, great collaborative effort in moving through that. And that was the plan that was approved at the board meeting on July 21st. But as Dr. Minor is often very fond of saying, things change by the minute. And where things stood on July 21st, two, three, four, five days later, we had a very different landscape. The number of COVID-19 cases in this part of the state was rising and going up. And so we had to really take a lo-, you know, a good, hard look at what the best decision was for the safety and welfare and health of all students in Exeter and all staff and employees that work in the district as well. So as many of you are aware, on Friday afternoon, Dr. Minor provided a very detailed video of the decision that Exeter Township School District would be fully virtual for the first quarter. And so, as a result of that decision, in the works prior to it, there had been a tremendous amount of planning that had been occurring with teachers, with administrators, with board members, around building a plan that made the most sense and factored in, most importantly, the feedback that we had heard from community members based on our experiences last spring. So the plan that we're going to present tonight reflects that feedback. And before we get into it, I just want to mention two things real quickly. Number one, first, it's very important and critical that I say, this has been the quintessential collaborative project. This has not been a one-man show at all. No way this plan would be here tonight and in the great shape that it is if it wouldn't have been for all the amazing administrators, many of whom are on this call, teachers, district office administrators, you know, folks that we got input, people in the community that we got input from, all of those folks working together made this plan great, so this is truly a collaborative endeavor. The other thing that I want to mention is, at any point throughout the presentation tonight, if anybody listening via livestream has a question that they would like to raise as a result of the plan that they would like us to address, you can, you can email that question directly to Mary Ann Gibney, who's my administrative assistant, her email address is M as in Mary, T as in Teresa, Gibney, G-I-B-N-E-Y, at myexeter.org. And her address is also linked to the livestream, so if you have questions, please feel free to send those to her, and we'll address those at the end of the meeting. Dr. Minor, I went ahead and did the introduction when we lost you, I hope that was okay.
That's fine, thank you, I would just add, and I'm sure you said this already, but I want to say it personally, that our team worked so incredibly hard, I know Dr. McLennan acknowledged the work that went into this, but I want to publicly thank every principal, every coach, every administrator, who just really worked to put together what I think is an amazing plan, and to thank all of the teachers who've met with all of us over the last few days, I'm so confident in their ability to execute this. And I'm really excited about the quality of what we're gonna be able to deliver. So thank you for letting me say a few words, Dr. Winters.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. So, we're gonna go through the plan, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen so that everybody can see the plan as we go through it. And this plan was also shared out earlier this afternoon via parent link from Dr. Minor, and so folks have access to it as we go through it. We'll go through this systematically with different folks on the call, taking different parts. The plan begins, when we look in the third page, with just some background pieces, an introduction, given the uncertainty of the times that we're in, why we traveled down this road, the purpose of that plan. I want to take a few minutes and highlight the goals, because I think they're really, really important. When we developed this plan, we wanted to make sure that we minimize disruption to student learning in the 2021 school year. We wanted to make sure that we had clear, consistent expectations for students, staff, and families. That was a big P, feedback piece that we heard in our survey. We wanted to provide high-quality instruction with a focus on equity, engagement, and rigor. And we wanted to make sure that we supported students and families through consistent communication and equitable access to instruction and assistance to meet the needs of stakeholders. So you will see, as we go through this plan, we're focused on all of those goals. There's an overview that highlights our mission and our vision statement, but I also want to draw your attention on this page to definitions. There are some terms that you're gonna hear often throughout the presentation tonight. Asynchronous learning, live lesson, office hours, and synchronous learning. Wanted to provide some definitions for you in terms of what those terms mean. We talk about asynchronous learning, that's learning that allows students to access material, ask questions at any time that works for them, that's independent. Versus synchronous learning, where the learning that the student learns from the instructor in real time. When we talk about office hours, those are the times outside of class periods when teachers are available to support. And a live lesson is a lesson that connects students with the teacher and creates that engaging experience. So you'll hear those terms as we go throughout the plan. On page four of the plan, gets in a little bit talking about the calendar, and I think this is an important piece that I want to share with everybody listening. One of the things that we recognized, especially in getting feedback not only from our teachers, but our coaches as well, was that if we were going to make this plan successful, it was going to necessitate quality professional development for teachers at the outset of the school year so that they could feel 100% prepared. And so, we made a very strategic decision to add three ACT 80 days on at the beginning of the school year, August 24th, 25th, and 26th, where we can focus on PD, on some of our new technology and online instruction best practices. We also looked at August 27th and 28th, the Thursday and Friday of that week, as half-days for students in the morning, virtual half-days that are connection-type days that help us do the beginning-of-the-year information, that get us connected with our students, and then professional development in the afternoon. So the first day of full-day academic instruction will be August 31st, which is one week later than the original first day of school. So as to not disrupt the rest of the calendar for the school year, instead of mixing things up, all we've done is the in-service days that were scheduled during the year, October 12th, January 18th, May 7th, they're now full instructional days for students, and we moved those ACT 80 days to the front of the calendar. Under communication tools and strategies, I just want to draw your attention to the Schoology parent account setup. Another piece of very significant feedback that we heard from families was that there were challenges in knowing how to access Schoology, being able to get it set up, knowing how to do it properly. The link on this, in this plan that's on this page, will walk you through how to set up an account on Schoology. There's also information in terms of where to go on the website to get information. Additionally, on the next page of the plan, talks a little bit about what the expectations are for teachers, that they're gonna really focus on that rigorous, standards-aligned learning for students, participating in those lessons, and they're gonna follow a model of instruction that'll support learning in manageable parts. The next section of the plan gets into some of the Schoology pieces in particular. This year, Schoology will be the platform that we will use for all students K through 12. And that will be accessible for all of our students and our parents as well. Skyward will remain the tool that we use for our gradebook, where parents can go to look at grades. That, that does not change. We will continue to make sure that we provide direct online instruction. This was another area that we really wanted to focus on this year, making sure that we had a good balance of that live synchronous instruction and also asynchronous instruction. And you'll see an example of that when we get to the schedules in a few minutes. That, that involves making sure that we have live lessons and opportunities for collaboration and differentiation. And really, we're gonna be focusing on new learning, alignment to scope and sequence, a lot of opportunities for feedback, and also engaging students in that rigorous learning, that's another term that you're gonna hear a lot this evening. Another piece of feedback that we heard often as we went through our data from the survey was parents wanted, you know, a rigorous quality curriculum for students, so we're really focusing on that. Terms of activities, this page goes more detail into the kind of activities students can expect. You know, the welcoming, the greeting students to that collaborative environment. I will note on this page, one change, as a district, we have made the decision to purchase Zoom and use Zoom as our online tool to collaborate with students. Last year, we used Google Meet, so we'll be switching to Zoom this year. The biggest reason for that is that allows us to use breakout rooms, that allows us to do small group instruction with students during the different class periods throughout the day, and really allows teachers to support students in that collaboration. In terms of how the Schoology courses will be organized, when students log in and when parents log in, they're gonna see a course headquarters section that gives the name of the course, you know, a picture, the email address for the teacher, the building name. There's going to be a class overview for K-6 and a syllabus for 712 that just looks at, you know, those, you know, class rules and norms of the elementary level, as well as the topics we're covering at the secondary level in terms of grading. The acceptable use policy will be there, links for Zoom, links for some of the digital resources we use. In addition, you'll find a course picture, that's where you'll find updates, weekly folders. Another piece of feedback we received was that parents would really appreciate knowing each week what exactly are the assignments that my son or daughter needs to do. Those folders will be in place that will help with that, as well as a week at a glance on a daily basis, lesson folders, materials, layout. We're basically using Schoology as one-stop shopping. That's where all the kids can go, that's where all the families can go, that's where all the information will be. Anything related to learning, teaching, learning for students, that's where you can find it. In terms of accountability and grading, I just want to point out that there will be an expectation that students log into their synchronous sessions, that they turn in their work when it's due, grading policies will be clear, we are grading at all levels this year. You might remember, we did pass fail last year at the junior high level, and at 5-6, we're not doing that. This year, we are fully grading everything, different kinds of assessments, not just the quizzes, but, you know, simulations, discussion boards, projects, those type of things, with the feedback piece being critical. Attendance is gonna be required each day. There will be a link in Schoology, some type of Google form that students can log into at the secondary level to note their attendance. At the elementary level, teachers will be able to, you know, determine that attendance when students log into those synchronous meetings. We will still, you know, accept excuse notes, as we've done in the past, if a child has to miss school for illness or something along those lines, some type of appointment. And then, a little bit of word on grading, graded activities and assessments, they'll have a point value, it'll be very clear how we're going to assess. The last piece I'll talk about before I turn it over to our two secondary principals to talk about their schedules is the administrative support team for the, for secondary virtual education. We felt like it was very important this year that there be a go-to person overseeing the different areas at the secondary level. So language arts will be Melissa Devlin, our ELA supervisor, math will be Dr. Maggie Wright, one of our assistant principals at the high school. Social studies will be Mr. Joe Alcaro, one of our assistant principals at the junior high. Science will be Ms. Andy Wallach, our math and STEM supervisor, and electives and specials will be Mr. Dean, our other assistant principal at the high school. This will allow Dr. Flam and Mr. Campbell to still function as overall principal for their respective buildings and help with the family support and the other things that folks need. So at this time, I'm gonna turn things over to Mr. Campbell and then Mr., and then Dr. Flam to talk about a sample schedule for the high school and the junior high. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Dr. Winters. Good evening, everybody, thank you for joining in tonight. I want to talk a little bit about a sample schedule for the virtual plan for high school. As was mentioned, what we're trying to do is maintain some balance between the routine that students are used to on a day-to-day basis, keep that structure so that students can focus on learning, but at the same time, provide some flexibility, given the nature of students being in their homes and may have other personal responsibilities to attend to. But in this case, we've maintained as much of what we're used to as we could. And you can see that we've got a six-day rotation, as we've always had, and an eight-period day, as we've had. And in this case, what we're looking at is a student's day, starting at 7:30, as it always has, and ending at 2:50. And what we're doing is trying to maintain that structure, knowing that students have some flexibility during those asynchronous times to take care of their own personal responsibilities, as well as attend to the learning that they have to do that day. But in this case, starting at 7:30, students have an opportunity to begin their work during the asynchronous lessons that they had from the previous day. And then period one starts at 8:30, and on day one, you can see that this student has strength and would be a synchronous class, meaning that that student would be logging in with his classmates and his or her teacher for that strength class for 40 minutes. After that is period two, and that on day one is asynchronous. Then on day three, on day one is synchronous, so it alternates back and forth, and on the odd days, such as day one, students would have all of their odd-period classes synchronously. As you go through that day on day one, you'll notice that toward the end of the day, we have a period seven and eight. And as you know, many of our students have block classes. So in this case, that student would have a block class period seven and eight, which would be graphic design. And for that day, the student would meet the first part of that block synchronously and would go through learning activities with the teacher and with classmates, and then move into asynchronous work. The end of the day, we've got office hours, and that's a time when all students are assured that they will be able to meet with their teachers as they wish to. And essentially, it's an open door where students can find their teacher that they're looking forward to get some help for their learning from that day. The next day, moving into an even day, we see very similar pattern, but what we see is a reversal of synchronous and asynchronous classes. So when even days, such as day two, even-period classes are gonna be synchronous. So in this case, students start at 7:30 with asynchronous learning, they continue that through 9:10, when period two synchronous learning starts. And at that point, all students in their period-two classes would be expected in those Zoom rooms with those teachers and their classmates for a synchronous lesson with the teachers and the students in real time together. And then continue to alternate throughout the day. One little variation on that is our every-other-day classes, such as fitness, wellness, and music classes. You'll notice an example of that in our period six in our day-two schedule here. And because those alternate, and because our synchronous and asynchronous schedule alternates, we need to split those up each time they meet. Working with those teachers, that will be just fine, and it'll work well for the majority or for those classes, and it'll work extremely well for some of those, particularly the fitness classes. As every day is, we'll finish with office hours, and then we'll repeat the cycle. The days one and two are gonna be the exactly same as three, four, five, six, and we repeat the cycle. Thank you, Dr. Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, I appreciate that very much. Now I will turn things over to Dr. Flam, the principal at the junior high school, who will talk through a seventh-grade student day and an eighth-grade student day. Dr. Flam?
Dr. Winters, much like the high school, we're trying to accomplish balance in our schedule between synchronous and asynchronous learning. One of the things that we wanted to do was mimic our regular schedule. The junior high's schedule is unique, it is not an eight-period day. Instead, it is a 17-period day, and we carve up the 17 periods in a variety of ways, three different course lengths, which provided a little bit of a challenge for us. So, we converted our usual six-day cycle to an eight-day cycle. And in this model, students will see their, each of their teachers for synchronous instruction every other day. They would move through their scheduled day, period by period, and would move from some synchronous learning to some asynchronous learning throughout the day. Another thing we wanted to do was make sure that students saw their teachers every other day, that teaches a common planning time, that we preserve time for individual time with teachers or students, and that we preserve time for IEP and GIP meetings as well. So, in order to do so, we begin the day with a block of time where students are working independently, asynchronously, they're, the teachers are in common planning, they are attending meetings, they're receiving professional development possibly, they're providing feedback to students asynchronously, and completing a variety of different assignments. At nine o'clock, students may schedule time with teachers by appointment, teacher, student-teacher time. And this gives an opportunity for students to start their day, checking in with the teacher, if they didn't understand an assignment or they're working on something and want to consult with the teacher where their day begins, they may do this between nine and-
Eric, we're having trouble hearing you.
Between 9:30 and 9:40 each morning, we're going to have students log into homeroom. At this time, we'll take attendance, this is also an opportunity for us to provide some of our ABEX, our anti-bullying lessons, and also some social-emotional learning, as well as some announcements for the day. Each of our seventh grade, there are four different models for seventh grade. I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, that's better.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
I'm back, exit and rejoin. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I disabled your video, you're, you're good.
I apologize. So, so if you look at this schedule, it's really, it's really- okay, if you look at, at- it's really an odd-even schedule, so when we build out the eight-day schedule, days one through four are the same days, five through eight, kind of repeat that pattern. So, in this one example, and again, there, there are several different models. In this one example, on a day one, this particular student would start with science class asynchronously. They would be working on assignments, they would be completing assignments most likely from the previous day. And then they would move to PE, this would be a synchronous session with their PE teacher, periods five, six, followed by period seven, eight. This student would take English Language Arts Strategies synchronously. They would have time to work with their teacher to complete whatever activities the teacher is assigning and have live instruction from the teacher. After a lunch period, this student would move to exploring tech. That would be an asynchronous session, again, students would be working on assignments that were given by the teacher previously. Following that, the student would have a live session with their English Language Arts teacher, and they would finish the day with an asynchronous math session. On an even day, things kind of get flipped, so the ELA instruction becomes asynchronous, the math instruction becomes synchronous, and students move through the rest of their day as they would normally, periods one through 17. In this model, every student sees their classroom teacher for live instruction every other day. That was very important to us. And so they're working synchronously at times, they're working asynchronously as well. At the end of the day, each student has an opportunity for independent asynchronous work, and then following that, they have time to meet with teachers again synchronously to finish the day. So, again, we're trying to create balance, we're trying to mimic what students would do in terms of stepping through period by period their regular day, and giving teachers an opportunity for meeting time, for common planning time, and giving students an opportunity to consult with their teachers on a regular basis.
Great, thank you so much, Dr. Flam, appreciate that. The next section of the plan looks at scheduling for K-6. So all four of our K-6 principals are gonna have a piece in explaining this, we'll start with Dr. Haller. So Kristy?
Thank you, so I think you'll find that the K through four plan, which I'm gonna focus on, has a lot of similarities to the secondary plan. What has been decided to happen is our grade level bands have been split, so I will be covering kindergarten and first. Mrs. Masser is second grade and third grade, and Mr. Isselman, the principal at Lorraine, is fourth, and also will be supervising K through four specials. Like secondary, we also, it was very important to us to make sure that our schedule included an asynchronous time as well as a synchronous time for our students. We also tried to make sure that the schedule mimicked what students would be doing during the course of the day while providing flexibility for our parents. So one of our big areas of focus was trying to make sure that through K through four, that lunch was at the same time for families for that flexibility piece, as well as the specials. Kindergarten, we have two proposed schedules. At this time, we are leaning towards action number, action number two, which you'll see is a split-day schedule. What we are proposing is we'd like to take our full-day kindergarten and split it into an AM and a PM session. That means that we'll have a group A and we'll have a group B for our students. And that just simply is going to allow us to work with smaller groups of students. So for instance, if we have 20 students in a kindergarten class, 10 will be in group A and 10 will be in group B. So while group A is doing synchronous, group B will be doing asynchronous work. And we find, we're feeling that that is important, because our kindergarten students have not been in school, that we really want to focus on building that stamina and establishing that relationship for our little ones as we ease them into the beginning of the year. First grade schedule looks a little bit different. Again, you'll see that we start with a homeroom period, which is that morning meeting time, and then it'll be a blend of asynchronous and synchronous learning throughout the course of the day. Again, with maintaining that same lunch break time, as well as specials at the end of the day. And at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Masser.
Thank you, so I'm gonna focus on second and third grade, just like Dr. Haller has said. We want, we had to look at all the grade level bands in order to kind of look at the flow. Two questions we asked ourselves. When do students learn best, and what do students, what do we need to equip students with so that they can learn? So, starting and ending the day with their homeroom teachers is really important to get that social-emotional connection so that teachers know their students, but also to look at where the academic discrepancies may lie so that they can kind of set the tone and the structure for the next day, or the start of the day. We also looked at that ELA block, because students learn best in the morning, and they need the support of also a parent, whether to help sign in or to help support in some way. A parent may, or an adult, may need to be close by at home, but we also scheduled it so that they don't have to be. Because the teacher, the teacher will do a synchronous and an asynchronous component that will, one, allow the student to watch a video, and then move- and then move into a whole synchronous lesson where they can actually spend some time talking about the lesson, and at any time, the students can go back and look back at those lessons or study them prior to. So, that will offer an advantage that we didn't have in the spring. We also looked at our RTII model, and across all grade level bands, we tried to place it so that it didn't overlap with the previous or the next grade level so that we could look at servicing our kids in an equitable way. Like Dr. Haller said, lunch and recess all at the same time because we know that some of our families have multiple, multiple kids at home, and just kind of looking at the flow in order, how long could kids learn before they need a break and then come back to the learning? So, we were very cognizant of making sure that we didn't overtax a student with having to have too much screen time. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Isselman.
Thanks, Mrs. Masser. So, 4th grade really mimics exactly what Dr. Haller and Mrs. Masser have mentioned as far as blend between synchronous and asynchronous and kind of a gradual release model for our teachers so that students have an introduction and then can proceed into some asynchronous work. If you're looking closely to between the different grade levels, you'll see some variance there with what programming is specific to that grade level. And then some of our asynchronous time also capitalizes on some new technology pieces that our teachers will be getting training on, and we're excited to roll out to our families, one of which includes first in math. So, you'll see some of those programs notated through the different schedules. A piece that's going to look a little bit different through our specialists will be the addition of a social and emotional learning special, and that will exist for all of our students K through four. And that will be done jointly with our school counselors through each of the three elementary buildings, with some additional support offered by our health and PE teachers. Back to you, Dr. Winters.
And at this point, I'm now going to turn things over to Dr. Fries, who is going to talk through a sample 5th grade schedule and a sample 6th grade schedule at Reifton. Dr. Fries?
Thank you, Dr. Winters. The Reifton schedule looks very similar to the K4 building as well as the junior high. We created a schedule with teachers and administrators to create the most productive learning structure for all students and teachers. As you see, what we have down here, it is basically on the normal Reifton day. It goes from 8:00 to 3:05 for students. We have a nice mix here of synchronous and asynchronous learning. Got 240 asynchronous minutes, 210 synchronous minutes. So, our students will get a lot of time with their teachers, which I think will be very beneficial for our students. So, this is pretty much what a 5th grade day looks like with the ELA synchronous and math synchronous time as well as asynchronous. We do have lunch and recess in there. It's an hour time. We tried to make that similar in 5th as well as in 6th grade because we know that we've got some parents that have students in both grade levels. So, this is what this looks like. We do have specials, one per day. Some may be synchronous, some may be asynchronous, art, music, health, and PE, create and library. The 6th grade schedule, very similar to the 5th grade schedule. It starts out with a synchronous homeroom introduction to the day. We end the day where the homeroom teacher gets to work with the students, answer any questions that may have come up through the day, talk about any homework that might need to be, might, might need to be worked on in the evening. And it really will be a good way for our teachers to make connections with our students and to answer questions.
Thank you, Dr. Fries. So, as you can see, the schedules that were developed, our principals did an amazing job working with their teams, putting them together to really focus on and account for a lot of the suggestions that we received from parents through that survey. We're going to talk about some other pieces related to online learning, and then we'll get into pupil services. In terms of attendance, I touched on attendance before, but I wanted to give folks a little bit more detail. We will follow our district attendance policies as we enter this school year. Students will record their attendance each day using that virtual attendance Google form that will develop, that will be developed. We do have times that we are asking students to, or to have attendance recorded by. There is flexibility there. If there are, you know, issues or instances where attendance can't be logged in, as long as communication gets sent out to, you know, attendance secretary, building administrator, we can certainly make adjustments as they're needed. I will also note that we recognize that there may be some COVID-related absences this year, either due to parent work schedules or childcare issues or a COVID-related illness of a student or family member. Those are acceptable. You know, we do recognize that, and we will work with families through that. There is also a nice section here for students on online learning tips, how they can be successful in Schoology. Things like checking your calendar, checking your agenda, being proactive, saving digital copies of work, and a really great visual that I would really encourage parents to look at with students is this online learning guide. This was developed in the spring by our own John White in the art department at the high school, and I think it really captures very nicely what kind of best learning practices are when you're an online learner working from home. And then, I wanted to circle back again with grading. Grading, this time around, will be consistent with the grading practices in the brick-and-mortar setting. You know, assignments will be submitted, they'll be completed, they'll have due dates, they'll be graded. Parents can access grades in Skyward. That will not change at all. We really, as, and hopefully you've seen as we've gone through the plan, our focus has really been to try to mimic and mirror the brick-and-mortar experience in an online setting as best we can. At this point, I'm going to turn things over to Mrs. Dawn Harris, our director of pupil services, who will talk about some of the pieces related to pupil services. Dawn?
Thank you, Dr. Winters. Hi, everyone. So, before I start talking about the specifics of this piece of the document, I do want to express gratitude for the work that the principals did with building the overall master schedules and the building schedules. Because of their hard work and commitment to building consistency into those schedules, that basically allows us, in the world of scheduling special education and scheduling gifted education, a real opportunity to make things very seamless and very efficient in terms of our scheduling. So, saying a public thank you to the principals for all of their hard work on that. And thank you for being inclusive in your planning and, and thinking about those things. So, special education services, of course, are going to be provided in the virtual environment. And much like the rest of the planning that we're doing, we're trying to mimic as much as possible the work that we're doing in brick-and-mortar. One of the advantages that we have now, that we did not have in the spring, regardless of what district you were in, is that we're not under a mandated closure. So, we have more availability to access our materials, more availability to send materials home in a flexible fashion to families, including workbooks for explicit instruction programs, manipulatives, card sorts, et cetera. We also have the opportunity to continue the really important work that we do with community-based instruction and work experiences and internship experiences. So, to the extent possible that our community partners are still willing to work with us on those things, we'll be able to make a lot of that available to our students who are focused on their transition goals in their IEPs, particularly at the secondary level. Schedules will be consistent each week, thanks to the work of principals. Related services will all be provided virtually, including speech, OT, PT, vision, hearing, et cetera. We'll be doing progress monitoring as part of our instruction and part of that cycle of instruction. It's very important for us to be able to do that in order to continue to monitor progress for our students with unique needs. We'll be holding IEP meetings virtually, using the Zoom platform. There are some procedures listed here in the plan, so parents know how case managers will be communicating with them regarding setting up those meetings. But again, because of the work that the principals did, there are some consistent times in the schedule to be able to have IEP meetings at each level. So, they were really thoughtful about that as well in giving us opportunities to be consistent with scheduling with families. One of the things that kind of came to a halt during the mandated closure was evaluations and reevaluations. So, we recognize that there's a backlog there that we need to work on while simultaneously moving forward with the other evaluations and reevaluations that are in the queue. One of the things that we were able to do is, and we've been working on for quite a few months at the county level, is create a consortium with the Chester County IU and the BCIU to be able to access virtual platforms for evaluations. And so, this will allow our school psychologists the opportunity to conduct some of those evaluations and reevaluations virtually. There's also a clause in there that we're reserving sort of the opportunity to do limited onsite testing in accordance with CDC guidelines as we see appropriate. Much of what I will say about gifted education is the same as what I said about special education in that the consistent schedules in the buildings allow for us to be consistent in our scheduling for gifted instruction. At the K through 6 level, gifted teachers will provide some live instruction sessions as well as asynchronous support for students. At the 7 through 12 level, the live instruction will be provided by the course teachers, and the gifted teachers will provide asynchronous support and, of course, consultation and collaboration as needed. We'll also be asking the gifted teachers to create a repository of Schoolology housed resources for individual students for the purposes of enrichment. GIP meetings will function very similarly to IEP meetings in that they'll be held virtually, and there are some procedures there for how we'll be scheduling them. Same is true of gifted evaluations. The district made a commitment pretty resoundingly as an administrative team to make sure that we continue with our other student supports that are available in the district. Of course, continuing with supports for 504 agreements and individualized health plans, but also student attendance improvement conferences and other student support-related meetings that we would typically hold during brick-and-mortar time. In terms of English learner supports, again, they will be providing those very similarly to how they're provided in brick-and-mortar. At grades 6 through 12, the ESL teachers will meet live and synchronously with students during their scheduled ESL periods that they have built into their schedule, and then also providing additional supports. At the elementary level, they'll meet live a minimum of one time per cycle for the purpose of language acquisition, and then receive additional supports in their other courses. Again, the district has made a pretty solid commitment to making sure that as we move into this virtual platform, we're addressing social and emotional supports for students and, and issues that come up related to those areas. So, we'll be continuing with our school counselors, social workers, and our mental health teams to provide all of the services that they would typically provide, including meeting with students individually and in small groups, helping to provide resources and helping to provide crisis intervention. There's a list of community resources there, but that is also located on our website, and we update that continually as we get access to different resources. And finally, this page again just reaffirms our commitment to providing mental health crisis intervention during this time using our threat assessment teams and mental health staff, and also our commitment and obligation to do mandated reporting during this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. Appreciate that. For the next section of the plan, which gets into technology and devices and internet access in particular, I'm going to turn things over to Joe Way, our supervisor of instructional technology, to talk about those pieces. Joe?
Thank you, Dr. Winters. Yes, this is a linchpin of the whole discussion this evening is devices. And during this unprecedented pandemic, we are also experiencing but what we've managed to do is make sure that at least every grade 5 through 12 will have a district-issued Chromebook, just like the, to continue our one-to-one. But from grades K to 4, we, we have a device for every student, and our goal is to work over the next couple of weeks to do distributions to backfill the students that already didn't get a machine in the spring. We are using inventory of machines gathered from labs, from classrooms in a unique last-minute effort to get, which is to fill and meet the need of this program. We also will be waiting for our K to 4. Because these are used older machines, we'll be not doing insurance on them like we do for our secondary one-to-one. But we will be running comprehensive tech support out of the administration building. There will be hours. Simply fill out a tech request, and we'll have someone meet you at the administration building to do support if machines have issues. If there's technical support or password issues, we will have a call center to answer technical support questions as well as get parents into Schoology and Skyward, anything that they need. So, it'll be a pretty consistent plan as to what we were doing in the spring technology-wise in support of what we're doing in the classroom. Internet access will also be handled in the same way. We do have a number of district hotspots available. We are trying to, of course, grow that number to fill the need. We did create a guide to low-cost internet resources, and we also referenced a map to some local hotspots. We, we will be looking for some other opportunities for hotspots to really share. We're building parking lots in some of the, some restaurants that aren't necessarily on that free Wi-Fi map. So, we are working to grow that list of resources of sites where students or families may go if they don't have internet. But ideally, if you do not have home internet, please let us know, and we will try to meet with the hotspot.
Thank you, Mr. Way. I appreciate that very much. One of the things that we have really tried to focus on is we do not want technology to be a barrier for any of our students in terms of their learning this year. So, if at any point, you know, as Mr. Way talked about, if devices aren't working or there is support that is needed in ensuring internet access works in your home, whether it's a hotspot or whatever, please feel free to reach out to us, and we will be happy to work with you and help to that end. As is noted in this paragraph, there are some resources for where you can find low-cost internet and also information about the free hotspots. As we get towards the end of the plan, on this next page, there are some expectations for parents and guardians. I think it's important to understand that the learning of all of our students, whether it's our youngest learners at kindergarten or our seniors in high school, it's a partnership with parents. And we want all of our parents to be partners in the education of all the students in extra township, school district. And so, there are some small things that, you know, parents can do to help to that end. Encourage you to look for parent updates on Parent Link, on the district app, on the district webpage. If you don't have the Exeter app, there's a link there. I'd encourage you to go ahead and sign up for that. Encourage you to sign on to Schoology and Skyward, and if you need help or assistance with either of those, there's directions there and numbers you can call to get help related to that. Help your son or daughter establish a set schedule and stick to that schedule as much as possible. Structure and predictability is important, and our hope is that the schedules that we've designed that were shared this evening will help to that end. Ensure that your child verifies their attendance daily. Make sure they attend live instructional sessions, which will occur via Zoom during the appropriately scheduled time for each class period. One word about that, we do recognize that there may be days when students can't log on to Zoom at the time of the live lesson for one reason or another. We have asked our teachers to record those lessons and house them in Schoology so that not only if students want to participate the first time and go back and look at it multiple times as they do work, but even if you as a parent want to sit down and go through it with them side by side, you'll have the capacity to be able to do that. Help them find an appropriate location for learning, someplace that's quiet, but someplace that's also comfortable. Help establish that routine, and communication is the key. You know, work hand-in-hand with your son, you know, son, daughter. If they're older, you know, help them build skills in terms of how to reach out to a teacher. Partner with them. That communication is key. We want to make sure that we're meeting all the needs of all of our learners as best we can. And then the last page of the document has all your contact information. As Dr. Minor said, and as I said at the beginning of this presentation this evening, it has truly, truly, truly been a team effort. We could have never put this plan together without all the people that are on this call and even some people that weren't able to join this evening. And all of our administrators, central office, secondary, elementary at the building level, their names are here, their email addresses are here. And I know I speak for all of them. If you have questions in it related to any of these areas that you want answered, please don't hesitate to reach out to any of the individuals on this list. And if they don't know the answer, they'll find it and be able to get back to you. So, thank you all so much for listening to the- So thank you all so much for listening to the presentation this evening. And at this point in time, before we get into any questions from the community that were sent to Mary Ann, I just wanted to pause for a second and see if any members of the curriculum committee, many board members that are on the call have any questions.
I do. Just curious to know how many how many hours a day can a parent be expected or should a parent be expected to participate in his or her
It's not just in the car?
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Fiddler.
Yeah, just how many hours a day can it, should a parent plan on participating in his or her student's education?
Um, you know, it's, you know, I would say that that is going to, you know, vary based on developmental level of the child. If it's a, if it's a secondary learner, then, you know, it's probably more so, you know, the reminder in the morning to, you know, get on, log your attendance, you know, review the schedule real quick. You know, do you have any questions? Do we need to reach out to your teacher? But really, you know, students should be able to navigate that day, you know, largely on their own. In terms of our elementary students, you know, the younger you go, you know, the first few times that, say, our primary students are logging on to Zoom for a synchronous lesson, they're probably going to need some assistance from their parent. But once the students learn that, over time, it should improve. I would say at the, at the younger grades, in the early going, during the synchronous time and some of the asynchronous time, there may be, you know, instances during the day where families, where parents will need to support students. But, you know, I know that, you know, there are some models where, you know, a parent has to function as a learning coach and may need to dedicate five to seven hours a day. That is not our model. Our expectation is not that, you know, parents have to sit with their children all day long while they do this work. We recognize that our parents, you know, have to work and and that was why we developed the model the way that we did because we wanted to make sure that, you know, students could be successful. We want parents to be supported, but without parents feeling like they have to sit beside the child all day.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody else?
I have a question. Just wanted to know, what is the process with the BCIU and the daycare? Do we have any updates on that or how that's going to work for those parents that need to have that type of supervision?
Yeah.
Yes, I could jump in. I have been in conversations with Dr. Hackman at the BCIU. We are fleshing out those plans and we'll have more information for parents within the next two weeks.
Okay. And then I have another question. The other question I have is, when a kid gets on to the Schoology and things of that nature and they want to go from one class to the other, I'm sure they're going to probably have to log off a Zoom and then go into another Zoom. Is that correct? Is that how it's going to work? Or it's going to be on like one platform and they switch? Or how is it designated out in terms of that?
So that's, that's a really good question, Mr. Miller. So, so each, each individual synchronous lesson tied to a period will have a separate Zoom link for that teacher. So it's not just one general Zoom link for the student that he keeps going back to the same one. If on a Monday, if a high school student has science period one and math period four and English period six and all three are synchronous, there will be a separate Zoom link in Schoology for all three of those classes.
So is it going to be something where the kid can look at it and say, all right, like the student can look at it and say, all right, at six o'clock, I mean, 11 o'clock, I click on to this Zoom.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
What about in terms of the asynchronous ones then, the ones that are not on schedule? How does that work? Are they just going to have this blank time?
So, so asynchronous is going to be, that's more independent work. So if period two, social studies is asynchronous on a Monday, then during that period two block of time, they'll be able to go into Schoology. That social studies teacher will have the assignments, activities they're supposed to be working on and they'll work on them during that period of time.
Got you. All right. Thank you.
At this time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask Mary Ann if we had any questions that were sent to her during the presentation that we can address?
Yes, there are several questions.
Okay.
Okay. So the first one was from Kim Stern. It says, I'm watching the live Zoom now and I'm wondering if this will, this meeting will touch on plans for Paris. If it will not be done tonight, is there a date known about what will happen with us? Thank you for any information.
Dr. Winters?
Yes.
I'll speak to that. This is Dr. Minor. We have been meeting with the, the Support Staff Association leadership. We're having ongoing conversations with them and we anticipate having more information within the next two weeks about what the plan will be.
Thank you.
The next question is from Pepsi Stop Motion. It says, when will we be going back to school?
I'll again take that question, Dr. Winters. We are continuing school. We're continuing school in a virtual environment. Our intention to return to a brick and mortar environment is at the conclusion of nine weeks, if we feel that we're able to safely execute a brick and mortar schedule with a virtual option, as was presented in our health and safety plan for the green phase, we will do that, but we're going to watch conditions on the ground, conditions in schools throughout the first nine weeks and then make that determination prior to the conclusion of those nine weeks as to when we would be able to return to buildings versus virtual learning.
The next question is from Amanda Sawyer. It says, my daughter will be starting second grade this year. As a nurse and a mom in this community, I completely back your, up your plans for virtual learning for the first semester at least. My question is, she will, she is a special needs child with a plan already in place with, with the school. I'm sorry. My question is, she is a special needs kid with a plan already in plan with the school. We will, will we meet virtual to discuss those needs before the school year starts since we didn't last year? I don't want to see her fall behind and how would those evaluations work from, working from home?
Mrs. Harris, can you address that question, please?
Oh, I apologize. That's my dog. Yes, I can. So a couple of things, just like during brick and mortar time, IEP meetings are available whenever families request them. So if a family requests an IEP meeting for a specific purpose, we'll certainly hold that IEP meeting. Regarding evaluations and reevaluations, again, we're working on a virtual platform to be able to do those in a virtual environment and have the option for some limited onsite testing as well.
Thank you.
The next question is three parts. So I think I'll read one and then you can answer it and then read the next. Or do you want the whole question, all three questions, Dr. Winters?
Go ahead and do all three parts at one time, please.
It's from Michael. It says, I see that COVID absences will be excused with proper notes. How will COVID absences affect school assignments, makeup dates, tests, et cetera? Part two is, I want to confirm virtual learning is currently nine weeks long, starting on October 24th. How much notice will be given to teachers and parents on a decision to extend virtual learning or begin moving to an in-person class? Is there a specific date that's decision will be made by? And then the third is, how will children receive tier three support services?
So all three excellent questions. Thank you, Michael. To, to address all three of them, so from, from an absence standpoint, much like we would do in the building, when a student has an excused absence, you know, we will, we will work with the student and the family to make sure they're given the opportunities to make up that work. So if it's getting access to live lessons that they missed, making sure they have access to that. If there are extensions needed to turn assignments in, you know, especially if it's an absence that is due to something COVID-19 related, you know, largely out of people's control. But anytime there are excused absences, you know, the teacher, the building administrator, you know, will work with the student and the family to make sure work can get made up and they have enough time to do so. At this point in time, the decision to be virtual is only for quarter one, which is the first nine weeks. We don't have a set date where we can right now say, we know for sure this is when we're going to let the community know whether or not we're going to be face to face for quarter two. But I can tell you, much like we did this instance, we're going to try to give as much lead time as we can so that the necessary planning can be done. And much like we devoted extensive time into putting this plan together, we'll make sure if we do go back quarter two that we make modifications to the health and safety plan as needed to make sure we accommodate for whatever those needs are. And as far as tier three supports, yes, tier three supports will absolutely continue. Our reading and intervention specialists will have Schoology pages as well. We'll be working with our learners that have tier three supports that need them to make sure that they continue just like they have them in the building. Thank you.
The next question is from Tracy Sloanaker. It says, my question is about students who will attend BCTC. Parents of BCTC students have not received any information about how they will be running. Assuming they will be meeting face to face, will, will the BCTC students attending Exeter receive a schedule that will accommodate the BCTC schedule? I.e. all AM classes or all PM classes? Also, should it be assumed that there will be no transportation to and from Exeter for students who attend BCTC?
Thank you, Tracy. Those are really good questions. I'll answer the transportation piece and then I'm going to let Mr. Campbell talk about how BCTC is going to work since I know he's been working closely with that. As far as transportation, yes, our students that are doing BCTC, Exeter will continue to transport them to BCTC. Just like we'll continue to provide transportation for private schools or special education placements for students that continue to have them face to face. Mr. Campbell, can you address some of the other questions related to BCTC scheduling and what you've heard at this point in time?
Sure. BCTC is still in the process of finalizing their plan, but they are looking at a hybrid. And we have a schedule that should match up pretty well. Still working on some of the details to make sure that transportation aligns. But that's one of the benefits of the structure that we have of maintaining our traditionally period day that students who are scheduled for AM classes here can get over to BCTC in the afternoon and students who have BCTC in the morning get back to their homes for their virtual instruction in the afternoon.
Thanks, Mr. Campbell.
The next question is from Yari Hood. It says, I have a question about Schoology. When will it be updated to see the schedules for seventh grade?
So that's a really good question. So basically, you know, right now, now that we have the virtual plan completed, then our next step as we work on professional development will be getting those schedules done, taking what's in Skyward, putting it into Schoology. You know, in terms of an exact date, you know, it, it should be within the next couple of weeks, you know, we're moving quickly. That, that piece ties into some of the professional development component that is going to get underway full, full-fledged starting tomorrow. And so once we have more concrete information in terms of when those Schoology schedules are available for families, we'll put a communication out so that families know and they can get on and
The next question is for Emily Noel. It says, hello, can you give me an example of what a period of asynchronous learning might look like? Are there flexible times that a student can do later in the day if necessary? Does the work during asynchronous time replace evening homework or will there still be evening homework assigned?
Those are great questions. Thank you. So in terms of an asynchronous period, what, what you're looking at there is that's going to be a series of activities or assignments. And if you look at like the secondary schedule, for example, whether it's junior high or senior high, the way that the schedule is structured is that the synchronous and the asynchronous dovetail together. So if I'm a high school student and science period one or biology period one on a Monday is synchronous, then what I'm working on in the asynchronous period one biology slot on Tuesday is work related to what was taught, information that was shared during the synchronous session. The idea is for students to follow their schedules and do their work during the instructional day. So if you're a high school student, that starts at 7:30 in the morning, it goes until, you know, 2:30 in the afternoon, three o'clock with office hours. So the idea is for students to be able to complete that work within the footprint of that day. Certainly, you know, we try to be flexible and try to work with our families. So, you know, if there is a situation where a student needs to, you know, be able to work on synchronous assignments at a different time, maybe they've been ill, maybe there's a doctor's appointment, something along those lines, then we would encourage the student to reach out to the teacher or the parent and student together to reach out to the teacher and see if something can be worked out there. That's also the nice benefit at the secondary level of having both Dr. Flam and Mr. Campbell being able to be a direct conduit with our families to kind of help navigate those unique situations as they arise.
The next question is from Kirsha O'Reardon. She said, will Exeter High School still be offering the EVA program through Edgenuity as they have in the past years for students that do not plan to attend traditional school if, when it opens back up? Or is that being replaced with the new virtual schooling? Because it appears as though the new virtual school learning layout follows a traditional daily school setup where Edgenuity and Edgenuity teachers work with students that have alternative schedules and were very flexible with the classroom time.
Thank you for that question, Mrs. O'Reardon. I remember working with you and your daughter last year when she did the Virtual Academy. So it's actually a great question. Just yesterday, you know, in a administrative meeting, we had this conversation related to our Exeter Virtual Academy and our Supported Cyber School and how that dovetails. You are absolutely correct in that the plan that's being proposed tonight is a much more structured, mirror the school day type of plan as a, as is a strong, full virtual plan for the first nine weeks. We are still talking about how the Exeter Virtual Academy and the Supported Cyber ties into that. Mrs. Harris and myself will be meeting either in the next few days or the beginning of next week. And then for all students that were in the Exeter Virtual Academy or the Supported Cyber School last year, we'll make sure we reach out to those families and let you know where things stand.
Can I just add to that, Ms., or Dr. Winters, that it is our intention that families that were previously participating in EVA will be able to continue to participate in EVA for situations, you know, that are, that are unique and require a great deal of flexibility. So we don't intend to relinquish that ability for families to have that flexibility who have needed it in the past.
The next question is from Emily Noel. She says, as fourth graders, students received a new Chromebook for their personal use that was kept in school. This year, as a fifth grader, will these students receive new Chromebooks for home use?
I'll let Mr. Way answer that question.
I think Joe had to jump off because his power was lost. So he asked me to jump in. We are planning on rolling them out. So we are working on getting those fourth grade machines into students' hands based on numbers and we'll make sure that students are whole with the equipment that they need at home.
I do want to add that, you know, the fifth grade, our one-to-one program does start in fifth grade and that plans to continue. So those fifth graders will be issued a Chromebook. Again, supply right now, we are, we will have, have each of them will have it as part of that one-to-one program.
Thank you, Dana Missy.
The next question is from Beatrice Simo. I have a child in K four and a child in fifth grade and as I am sure many families in the district do. Is there any flexibility to adjust the schedule so my children can have lunch and recess together? It will be very difficult to keep my second grade focused, or my second grader focused on lessons while his brother has recess. And it would be unfortunate if they had to have recess alone each day when there is, when there is a peer in the home. Would it be possible for my son in fifth grade to regularly watch the recording 12 to 12:35, science, social study lesson at 12:35 and then complete asynchronous works afterwards? Thank you, Beatrice Simo.
Thank you, Beatrice, for that question. I guess what I will say with regard to that is, you know, with, with the plan this evening, you know, one of our intentions is, you know, moving forward as we continue to further, you know, flesh out and get ready for the start of the school year, you know, looking at whether or not there are things that we maybe need to mildly tweak. You know, the way the schedules stand right now, you know, that's, that's not something that we had initially thought of. It's a good point. It's something that we can consider and it's something that I will pass on to our elementary administrators and let them give some thought to and, you know, we'll see if there's a possibility there.
The next question is from Dan and Gemma Ahrens. Says, we have a child in second grade. Can you please talk about the learning materials beyond Chromebooks and digital resources that would be provided for students, for example, paperwork, books, et cetera? Also, are all synchronous le- lessons will be recorded, correct? Will students be allowed to work ahead if they complete the current day's task? Or will they have to wait for the next day to continue with the plan for the week? Thank you very much.
So um, I'll I'll answer the second and third question, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Ahrens that were in there. And then I'm going to let Mrs. Muster answer the first one about um grade two and and curriculum and resources. Um, you know, you, you know, you asked a question in terms of will the synchronous lessons be recorded? Uh, yes, they will be, um, and they will be accessible. Um, if if there is a student um that, you know, is is demonstrating an ability to be able to um get their work done and, you know, want to move a little bit more quickly, um, that would really be an individual conversation, excuse me, with the with the student and the parent and the teachers uh to take a look at things in conjunction with the principal and and see if there's things we can do. Um, you know, a- again, we're trying to, as best we can, achieve that balance of putting together a schedule that, you know, allows for collaboration and differentiation, but also allows for structure. And so, you know, we'll, you know, certainly do that and and do our very best to meet the needs of kids. Uh, Mrs. Muster, if there's anything you'd like to add related to resources that are used in second grade, that would be great.
I think that Mrs. Muster is off the call. She's having some difficulty with power at her home. Um, but I can speak to that as well, uh, just across the the grade levels. Um, the elementary principals are working with a team of teachers. We'll be meeting later this week or next week to get materials that we feel like as a district, the students would benefit from at home. And that will also include some curriculum materials, uh, which could possibly be like our investigations math workbook. So we will be compiling a list of those materials uh that students would best benefit from and then coordinate with our uh families for pickup. And then also identify some opportunities for families that would not have access to get to the building uh with our transportation providers to ensure that students get those materials at home. So that is a work in progress, but it's something that we are working on.
Thank you, Mr. Restelman.
This question is for Dawn Harris. The past, this past year, all second graders at a Watten were given testing to evaluate, be evaluated for gifted. When will parents get the results for that testing? Is she still on?
Mrs. Harris.
Uh, I can answer that question if Mrs. Harris isn't on right now. Um, we will be working with our school psychologists in terms of the ability to do further uh testing. Those are initial screeners. The psychologists then would move on for additional testing and I'll need to schedule that um according to their availability. So there will be more information to come at the start of the school year.
Thank you.
Um, I have another question about special ed support. It says, with regard to special education, will paraprofessionals be utilized to provide additional educational support? Which was a question from before.
Just reiterate what I'll reiterate what I said previously. Mrs. Harris and I uh are working through that along with the leadership of the association to determine how paraprofessionals will be.
Okay, the next question is very long. Um, it's from Lauren Ridge. Will library books be available for checkout so the children can actually hold a book to read and not continually have to have a screen in front of their faces? Where are teachers going to be required to teach from? I have already seen Facebook comments of teachers, not by teachers of our district, hoping that they can teach from home so they don't have to worry about childcare. Our children and and us parents are suffering enough with this online learning. They need their teachers 100% with without distractions from their own children. How do you honestly see a child learning in front of a computer? When we, when we, when you put in an image of a K four child in your head, what do you imagine you see? What image do you see? Virtual learning, let alone asynchronous learning, is putting the parent responsible for the being the teacher. This is not sustainable for the working parent. You are making us choose between feeding our children and keeping a roof over our head and our child's education out of pure fear and not scientific background. Get rid of the specials and allow those spaces to be used to spread the children out throughout the building. I understand the fear of having to leave your home to go to work during a pandemic. I'm a nurse. I have been working the entire time. Nurses and doctors and other healthcare workers went before you guys to learn how to mitigate this disease. Wear your mask, wash your hands and wipe things down. I have been exposed to many people with COVID and have not gotten sick. I think this that's worth noting.
Thank you for your questions and comment, um, Ms. Ridge. Um, to to address some of the different things that you mentioned um in your in your comment and question. So um, our team of district librarians uh actually met yesterday to uh put together a plan of how library books can be accessible um to families in the community um during the first nine weeks because we do recognize, especially at the elementary level, the value of kids having books in their hands. So that is something that we're accounting for and something that we're planning for. Um, teachers um are actually being given the option to decide whether they would like to teach in the classroom or whether uh either like like in their classroom, properly socially distanced um and do their recording and and facilitate their virtual learning there or whether they would like to do, you know, the teaching at home. And uh, Dr. Minor is being very flexible with that with our teachers and and it's it's such a wonderful professional group that we're very confident that they'll be able to, you know, figure out the best setting for them. It, you know, in terms of, um, you know, learning in front of a computer and and, you know, the sustainability of, you know, this type of model, I just think it's important to, you know, understand that, you know, this this was a very, very challenging, difficult and well-thought-out decision. Um, uh, you know, everybody on this call, Dr. Minor on down recognizes the, you know, power of face-to-face instruction and and, you know, the reason we all went into education is because we love being in schools. We'd love to see the kids. We'd love to be around the teachers. But, um, you know, we had to make a very, um, you know, wise and, you know, well-calculated decision around what was in the best interest of the health, safety and welfare of our students. And we feel very strongly that that this plan and this decision for the first nine weeks puts us in the best position to ensure their safety and allows us to continue to gather information as we prepare for what to do for the next quarter. So thank you for your comments.
Dr. Winters, could I just add one comment about the decision to allow teachers to either work from their homes or work from the classrooms? The, one of the reasons that we're we're doing that is that we want to preserve as many spaces as possible of with the BCIU childcare for uh other essential workers in our community. And so by allowing teachers to have that flexibility, we'll be able to maintain those spaces for um, you know, nurses and and doctors, people who have to to go into work and, you know, and all be eating the iron and teaching staff within our community if possible.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Um, Mary Ann, how many questions do we have remaining?
About 21.
Okay, so so here's what I'm going to do. Um, I I'm going to take one more question. Um, and then um for the remaining 20 questions, um, when I get into the office tomorrow, I will take a look at those. I will put together a document and I will make sure that those questions get answered and get shared with the public. Um, you know, we do want to affirm all the questions and concerns that were out there. Um, and so, like I said, I'll take one more question and then I'll make sure that I put together an FAQ document that answers the other concerns that were there. And I I do sincerely appreciate everybody's willingness to um ask the questions, to join this meeting virtually via livestream. It's greatly appreciated and we, you know, we appreciate, you know, you asking those questions. So, Mary Ann, one more question, please.
It's from Rachel Wydenhammer and she says, will kindergarten stay in a half-day model when we return to face-to-face instruction?
So when we return to face-to-face instruction, we'll go back to the kindergarten model that we, you know, were using in the building, um, which is a full-day model. Um, we uh we just felt, um, our our team of K four principals, um, our coaches, um, you know, our district administrators really felt like, since these are our least-ready learners and there are inherent challenges of them learning online, um, because of how young they are, that it just made more sense to, you know, condense their schedule while online. But when we go back to a traditional face-to-face school day, they'll be back being full day again.
Dr. Winters, can I just elaborate on that? We, you know, the although we're considering grouping kindergartens together so that, um, actually splitting apart so they're smaller groups with the teacher, it's still a whole day of content that we're going to provide into them. We're not changing in terms of what their kindergarten expectations are. And we have had requests from parents as part of um conversations that I've had with them to consider um a half-day option in the brick and mortar for kindergarten. And we'll we'll explore that further as we approach coming back to like brick and mortar as an option. But we intend as a district to maintain full-day kindergarten for all who wish to have it.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. So, um, I just want to, um, you know, one final time, um, thank everybody for your participation and involvement in this meeting. Um, thank you to the folks in the community that joined this call um via livestream. I appreciate it very much. Um, one of the things that um continues to impress all of us on this call is the care, concern and passion that the Exeter community has for its, you know, for the quality of education and for its kids. And your participation and involvement tonight is evidence of that. So I appreciate that very much. Appreciate all of the questions. Uh, we will get you responses to the ones that we didn't get to tonight. Um, again, thank you for your time and for your attention and um look forward to a great start of the school year and look forward to interactions with you in the future. So, thanks, everyone.